The hustle and bustle of City Hall keeps our city running. But now, just down the hall on the second floor is a designated room where new mothers who work at City Hall can take a few moments to perform an important task: pumping breastmilk for their infants at home.
While I'm at work, I do pump. And this will make it much more convenient.
Tracy Chavera, who works in Councilman Joe Buscaino's office at City Hall, speaks for all working mothers when she says it's about time.
It's really exciting. It sends a very clear message that there's an understanding and a sensitivity to balancing work and personal life.
Councilmember Tony Cardenas first introduced the motion that got the ball rolling to study the feasibility of providing lactation rooms at various city facilities. Two years later, the first lactation room has finally opened at City Hall with the help of the city's Commission on the Status of Women.
It is important to have a supportive work environment to come into after giving birth to a child. Breastfeeding is and should be a part of that equation.
While breastfeeding has been proven to benefit both mother and child, the mayor recalls learning about the struggles of new mothers when he authored the breastfeeding bill while in the California State Assembly.
Sometimes we had testimony of women having to go to a car with 100-degree heat like today and breastfeed in there.
And even in the workplace, women have found maintaining breastfeeding to be fraught with obstacles.
For most women who have to relegate to pumping or breastfeeding in a bathroom, who wants to eat in a bathroom?
But now, with the grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, new mothers who work at City Hall have a clean and private alternative.
This isn't just a woman's issue. This is a family issue, and this is a community issue. Women should have the dignity and the privacy and the respect that they deserve to breastfeed their children when they go back to work.
And Councilman Cardenas says this lactation room is just the first of dozens to open at the city's many facilities. Breastfeeding has been proven to protect infants against respiratory and ear infections, sudden infant death syndrome, diabetes, and childhood obesity. It can also lower the mother's risk of breast and ovarian cancer. It's not often we get the chance to do something for our public servants, so when the opportunity came along to give back to the men and women of the L.A. Fire Department, there was no shortage of volunteers.
We're gonna go get out and get to work.
Several hundred people gave up a recent Saturday to help transform the Los Angeles Fire Department's Frank Hotchkine Memorial Training Center. The large-scale service project at the historic site was a way for residents to thank LAFD men and women for their ongoing public service.
As you can see, we have painting going on. We have weed pulling going on. They're putting rock, decorative rock, in around the facility, really upgrading the landscape and the sprinkler system. So we're making a lot of great improvements that are gonna benefit the facility for years to come.
The volunteers were organized by LA Works, a volunteer center for community and corporate service. They hailed from companies such as Northrop Grumman, The Home Depot, L.A. Dodgers, and Pink's Hot Dogs, just to name a few. And those volunteers made it a family event by enlisting their spouses and kids to help get the work done faster. Together, they landscaped, washed fire trucks, dusted light fixtures, and much more.
I'm with my mom and my dad and my sister, and we're helping out the firefighters clean up the facility.
And this girl didn't let her injury keep her away. She scraped and painted with one hand while holding on to her crutch with the other. Now that's dedication.
Every day when we come here, and the outside agencies that come here, they're gonna notice all the work that you have done.
The feeling of appreciation was mutual. Families were grateful they could spend quality time together while giving back to their firefighters.
It feels good, 'cause like, they help us, so we wanna help them back when they need it.
Volunteers also had a lot of fun goofing off. Many took home a souvenir photo of themselves dressed up as firefighters. And why not? They kind of did save the day. And if you're interested in volunteering through LA Works, go to la works dot com. And there's also a lot of beautification going on on our city streets thanks to the L.A. Conservation Corps. Rasha Goel shows us what some young men and women are doing to help make over the city on their summer break.
On any given day during the summer, these young kids are out helping clean up the city as volunteers with the L.A. Conservation Corps. But today is a little different. They have an audience. That's because it's Bring Your Parents to Work Day.
Today's a day where the students bring their parents and work alongside with them to see what type of work they do during their vacation.
It makes me understand and appreciate that my daughter is going to work and helping the community, so, I mean, I appreciate LACC and the children for working hard.
These teens from the ages of 14 to 17 are part of the Conservation Corps' Clean and Green Program that helps beautify neighborhoods.
It allows people to feel changed. When people feel changed, you know, they feel comfortable and safe in their neighborhood.
It's an awesome opportunity to come out and see the people driving by, waving, and seeing that we're trying to make our mark in the community with Clean and Green.
The Los Angeles Conservation Corps provides at-risk young adults and school-aged kids with an opportunity to succeed.
This is a great organization for young people to join because it teaches them life skills, job skills, how to get things done.
Especially when it comes to giving back to their communities. From downtown L.A., I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Clean and Green is one of the L.A. Conservation Corps' oldest ongoing youth and workforce development programs. Well, we regularly report on the opening of new park space in the city, but it's the people behind the scenes, residents themselves, who are the real engines that drive the project. That's the case in El Serrino, where residents, after three decades, may finally have their park. It's not a celebration without the local drill team. And there's a whole heck of a lot to celebrate on this day if you ask one of the many El Serrino residents who showed up for the groundbreaking of the soon-to-be green space at the intersection of Alhambra and Concord Avenues, also known as the S-Curve.
I think it's the greatest thing that's happened here in probably 50 years. We don't have a park that we could use within three miles.
If Val Marquez's enthusiasm seems a tad disproportionate to the occasion, that's because he and his group, concerned neighbors of El Serrino, have been working behind the scenes for decades to make this park a reality.
And I just always ask myself, I wonder why it's an empty lot. I wonder why it's such a waste of land.
One main reason the city wasn't able to move faster on the project was that the land was owned by Caltrans and not the city of Los Angeles. The breakthrough came when Councilmember Jose Wezar helped garner a 25-year lease agreement between Caltrans and the L.A. Department of Recreation and Parks.
And when we cut the ribbon on this park, that 25-year lease was worth all the efforts and everything we put into this.
More than 4,000 children live within one mile of the project site. That's why the park is just the start of many more improvements, including...
Sidewalks, guardrails, and pedestrian access with appropriate signage around this area to make sure that we're not only improving this parcel, but we're improving the area around here to make it a safe park as well.
This is something we need around here to keep kids out of the streets.
The seniors will be able to come in and walk. Right now, they're walking the streets.
Once completed, the 1.3-acre site will be transformed into a recreation area with a nature garden, walking paths, and exercise equipment, something for everyone in El Serrino to enjoy. The fruits of labor born from real community effort. In addition to the Department of Recreation and Parks, the trust for public land had been the lead agency on the project. Well, police urge caution on the road as the end of summer nears. One flyaway shuttle service to LAX has been discontinued, and celebrating Nisei Week in Little Tokyo. These stories and more in City Beat. The LAPD will be conducting several checkpoints throughout the city from now through the Labor Day weekend to crack down on drunk driving. It's part of a statewide "Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over" campaign. In 2010 alone, 791 people died in California in alcohol-related car and motorcycle crashes. The age group with the highest percentage of alcohol-impaired driving fatalities in motor-vehicle traffic crashes was the 21 to 24 age group. Police say programs like Checkpoints, as well as the Sober Graduation Campaign, targeting young drivers, help reduce alcohol-impaired driving fatalities. The city of Los Angeles has been celebrating Navy Days since 1997, and this year was no different as members of the public were treated to free tours of a U.S. Navy destroyer and U.S. Coast Guard cutter George Cobb at the Port of Los Angeles.
Every year, we welcome a ship to port in support of the Navy League, which promotes and educates the public about the sea services, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine.
The Port of Los Angeles was once the home of battleships and is now also the future home of the USS Iowa. The local Japanese-American community celebrated in Little Tokyo the 72nd Annual Nisei Week. Taking place over two straight weekends, the festivities attracted visitors from all over Southern California and beyond.
This is an important event and one of the oldest and largest Japanese-American traditions that promote goodwill and cultural exchange.
And one of the most popular traditions of Nisei Week is the crowning of a Nisei queen and court. The young women chosen to sit on this year's court paid a visit to council chambers as part of the Nisei Week celebrations. LAX officials have announced they will discontinue flyaway bus service between the airport and the Irvine Station in Orange County sometime in September. The operator of the flyaway service at the Irvine Transportation Center recently filed for bankruptcy. This was the third straight year of losses since the Irvine service began in November 2009, with only an average of 48 riders daily. Other flyaway shuttle service locations will not be affected. For information about the LAX flyaway shuttles, go to lawa arrow slash flyaway. We recently brought you a story on the Lamert Park Book Fair, and now we take you to yet another event that shines the spotlight on the literary world of the African-American community. Anna Marcos takes us to the 8th Annual Los Angeles Black Book Expo, helping to open up books and minds.
Written word, spoken word, any kind of word is welcome here. The Los Angeles Black Book Expo aims to promote book authors and to encourage the Black community to read. It also highlights African-American media, history, and issues.
We have all sorts of activity, of new and aspiring authors, actually new authors, and even established authors are selling their books. We have panels and workshops going on, children's area, a spoken word pavilion.
Author Danielle Spencer Fields is best known for her role as Dee Thomas in the '70s show What's Happening. But she's gone on to become a veterinarian and animal show producer, and she's written a book called Through the Fire: The Journal of a Child's Star.
It basically talks about my experience growing up as a child in the industry, what I did after the show ended. And then, the second part is about how I had a surgery that changed my life, brought me closer to God, and made me realize my purpose. And I also wrote it to inspire the disabled community.
Books at this expo can be stark and gritty with titles such as Just Like Compton and Ghetto Diva. Others touch on a broad range of issues, from creating wealth, to partner violence, to building healthy marriages, to coping with the stress of being a teen mom.
I was a teen mother myself. I got pregnant at the age of 15, and I had my son at 16. It lets these girls know, okay, you can be successful. You can do anything you want to do, all the dreams you had, you can still succeed, and there's proof.
It's always good if you can support any of your authors, because a lot of us don't go through the big publishers. But anytime you can come out to a book expo, it's always good, because you enhance your learning.
For more information on the Los Angeles Black Book Expo, visit www.labbx.com. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
And most of the books mentioned in our story can be found and purchased online. In this week's list of things to do, an art walk in the valley, painting your own Rothko, and the city's pools stay open a little while longer. Shops and restaurants on Devonshire Street near Topanga Canyon Boulevard and local artists have come together to host the West End Chatsworth Summer Art Walk. They have already organized art walk events in June and July, and the final event of the summer is on Friday, August 31st, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. on Devonshire Street, between Topanga Canyon Boulevard and Owensmouth Avenue. So come on down and support the local businesses and artists. Enjoy refreshments and meet your neighbors. Door prizes include tickets to the Hollywood Bowl. Go to chatsworthfindartscouncil dot com for details. And take a guided tour of Mocha's permanent collection on Sunday, September 2nd, and discuss the ideas behind Mark Rothko's large-scale pictures and the techniques used to apply various colors that appear to float on the canvas. The tour from 1 to 3:30 p.m. is part of the museum's Sunday Studio Program and includes the opportunity to paint a picture with a guest artist using Rothko's techniques and your own. This participatory hands-on workshop has been designed in collaboration with Center Theatre Group's upcoming performance, Red, a play set in the 1950s in Rothko's New York studio. Mocha Grand Avenue is located at 250 South Grand Avenue downtown. Go to moca dot org. And you've still got time to get your swim on, as the city's Department of Recreation and Parks has extended summer swim at 46 of its aquatic facilities until Labor Day. That's three extra weeks of swim lessons and recreational swim. For the 14th consecutive year, children under the age of 18, seniors age 65 or older, and the disabled can swim for free at all of the city pools. The rest pay just $2.50 or $2 with the city library card. For more information, call the department's aquatics division at 323-906-7953. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview dot org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Managing your expenses can be challenging during difficult financial times. If you or your family has recently suffered a loss of income, you may now qualify for the Department of Water and Power's Residential Low Income Discount Program. The LADWP offers customers within qualifying income levels a subsidy on the cost of electric and water services for their primary residents. In addition, income-qualified senior citizens and disabled customers may be eligible for a discounted lifeline rate. Customers on life support equipment and those who meet the physician's certified requirements may also apply for a discounted rate. To find out if you qualify for any of these discounts and to receive a low-income discount application, please visit our website at www.ladwp dot com.
Hi, this is Caratero Family.
We are from Inza, Los Angeles, Royal Heights.
You're watching Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Good morning. It is Friday, August 31st. I want to welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council. My name is Herb Wesson. I'll be today's presiding officer. The council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. or thereabouts, and you're all welcome to come if just to watch your government work or if you have comments you'd like to make. You're welcome to do that. So with that said, Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call a roll?
Haller, Conbus, Kaino, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Caressca, Correia, LaMosh, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Buscaino moves. Mr. Parks seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves. Caressca seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to our agenda today. Before getting into it, there has been requests, one from the department and two from a council office, to receive and file item numbers 1 and 13. Again, 1 and 13.
Without objection. Next?
Mr. President, items 2 through 4 are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item 4 is in but has yet to be circulated. We should hold 4 on the desk.
Why don't we hold 4? Members specials on the other ones? See, no... Mr. Zion, did you?
All special on 4.
On 4?
Special 4.
Okay, so 4 is called special. On the remaining... Okay, so four is called special. On the remaining items, Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, what's the next order of items? My notes say five through 22.
Mr. President, items five through 22 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Reyes?
Item 21, please.
Mr. Reyes, item 21. Mr. Englander?
Carry over item 12 to September 14th, please.
Okay, Mr. Englander is requesting that item 12 be continued to... Did you get that date, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, September 14th.
Okay. Do we have... Well, members, any other specials? Do we have cards on these items, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 14, 15...
14, 15.
16, 17, and 21.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And that brings us where? Mr. Englander?
I'd like to reconsider item two. It was an appointment to the Police Commission, and the Commissioner is here, or the potential...
Okay, so we're going to have a vote on... For reconsideration on item two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that item is now back on the agenda. So, Mr. Clerk, that brings us to general public comment or presentations or what have you, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, now, before we move forward, I do want to give a very special thanks to Mr. Tony Cardenas and Mr. Ed Reyes, who were excused to do city business today. But knowing that we had very tight numbers in order to reach quorum with Mr. Garcetti serving our nation and Mr. Rosendahl dealing with an illness, they decided to come in to make sure that we could take care of the people's business. So I really want to thank Mr. Tony Cardenas and Mr. Ed Reyes for coming in, even though I know that you were excused to do city business. Mr. Buscayeno, are we ready for your... So we're going to start today with the presentation portion of our program led by our newest member, Joe Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President, and a shout out to my kids and wife who are watching on live on Channel 35. I love you. And with that, I'd like to welcome Sharefest Chad Meyer, the Executive Director of Sharefest. Let's give him a nice L.A. welcome. Thank you very much for being here, Chad. We love you. Members, Sharefest Community Development was founded in 2006. Its vision is to create an imprint of lasting positive change in the communities they work in. And with that, I know we have a two-minute video clip that's queued up if we can have... Thanks, Ken, to take a look at this video.
You may think you know a lot about Sharefest, but let me fill you in on some of the details. Sharefest originally started as a community workday. We started to make a lot of connections, met some great people. We also saw our community facing a history of broken families, drugs, violence, and a hurting education system. Our vision is to create a legacy of lasting positive change in our community. After eight years of community workdays, we've been joined by over 35,000 volunteers to complete more than 1,300 projects, amounting to over $6.5 million worth of work. All this has been done at no cost to our recipients. One of our biggest projects was the building of a new quad at Banning High School in Wilmington. Sharefest came alongside students to help create an environment on campus that gave students a sense of pride in their school and themselves. Banning High School is changed. In the principal's words, "Banning High is now being viewed as part of the solution to problems in the Wilmington community as opposed to the cause." What would have cost the school district approximately $400,000 only costs Sharefest $16,000. That's just 4% of what the district would have paid. Now that's efficient. The legacy we are building in the community is taking root. Through our areas of programming, we see kids who have been labeled as at-risk rising up as graduates, counselors, dedicated citizens with community-mindedness, kids with a goal in mind, and a legacy to build. Help us to continue to create a legacy of lasting change. Get involved. Learn more at sharefestsinc.org.
With that, members, you know, Sharefest accomplishes their mission by way of mentoring youth, fostering volunteerism in the community through service projects, and establishing working coalitions made up of city leaders, schools, businesses, and the faith-based community. Since its inception, Sharefest has mobilized over 40,000 volunteers to complete more than over $7 million worth of projects for Los Angeles County cities and schools. The mission of Sharefest is to develop comprehensive programs and services that strengthen communities and meet the needs and the lives of children and families throughout the city and county. Additionally, Sharefest has mentored over 1,000 young people through its Youth Development Academy. Sharefest has had such a positive influence in our district. In 2009, the organization worked with then-Councilwoman Janice Hawn to organize the effort to build a community center in conjunction with the Harbor Gateway Boys and Girls Club following the tragic incident, fatal shooting of 14-year-old Cheryl Green in 2006. They've also, as you saw in the videos, participated and helped and organized community cleanups at Banning High School in Wilmington and currently continue to support Eastview Little League in San Pedro. I recently attended a Youth Development Academy session at Cal State Dominguez Hills with Dodger great Maury Wills, and where this academy had an opportunity for at-risk kids who got a chance to learn fundamental baseball skills. They're able to get some swimming lessons and learn about alternatives to life on the streets. So we want to thank Chad Meyer here and Sharefest for their continued service to our great city and our county, and they continue to do great work. And with that, I want to congratulate Chad and his team and all the volunteers at Sharefest for continuing to give back to our community. God bless you. We love you.
Councilman Buscayeno, you do have Councilman Cardenas on the queue?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, former police officer Joe Buscayeno and now Councilmember Joe Buscayeno. I just want to thank you so much for your consistency in bringing your experiences and your relationships throughout your community and now announcing and letting the rest of the city know that organizations like Sharefest, they might have a different name, but the spirit is the same. And I'd like to ask the gentlemen here if you could share with us, please, when you do what you do with the young people in the community, as the video pointed out, they're going on to be counselors, going on to college, et cetera. If, perhaps for many of them, had you not entered their lives and showed them that picture of themselves, do you think you would have less success? And I'm being careful with my words, because what I think your organization does and many organizations like yours is you're basically putting the mirror in front of the kid and say, "Let me clean it for you." You might think that it's not a pretty picture. You might be looking at what's behind you or what's around you, but just look at yourself. And then all of a sudden, when they see that, we end up with kids going to college. Is that pretty much what you do?
Absolutely, absolutely. With our summer academy...
The microphone, please.
Absolutely. When, you know, our summer academy that Councilman Buscayeno attended, we had 225 kids attend that program with 350 on a waiting list. And many of you all know with the state budget cuts to education, there's not a lot of summer, positive summer programming out there that's available to these students. So through collaborating with Councilman Buscayeno's office and other community stakeholders, we've been able to form a great relationship with a university, get college students to invest themselves into the population of kids that we serve. And now we're seeing the middle school students that have attended our summer programming become counselors when they enter into high school and give back to the younger generation. So it's definitely left a positive imprint on their hearts and minds, and now they're paying it forward. As we've served them, they're now serving others, so it's...
So do you insert some kind of special chip in their brain or their heart or what have you? Or is what the kids exude after going through this program already there?
Yeah, so, no, it's been a lot of work and investment in getting the right leadership and place to invest into these students, people that aren't just there for a paycheck, that really care about them as individuals and pointing to them in the right direction.
So there might be some magic going on, but no magic chip, no special...
No, sir, no magic chip.
Artificial anything. It's all natural.
All natural, organic. Thank you. Thank you. With that, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for standing and appreciating the great work Sharefest continues to do for our community. And Chad, thanks again. We love you, and we wish you nothing but continued success. And with that, Sharefest, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
A big round of applause. Thank you, Councilman Buscayeno. Our next presenter, if we're ready, is Councilman Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm quite excited today to present a special recognition to honor and a very special event and to honor some work by some special individuals for the Queen of Angels Foundation. And I am joined today by members of the Queen of Angels Foundation, who are here to celebrate their second annual Marian procession on September 8th, honoring Our Lady of Angels, the namesake of our great city. And the Queen of Angels Foundation's members come from many different backgrounds and belong to a wide variety of orders, societies, and civic groups. This is important for an organization that celebrates the city's namesake, as it is a reflection of what the city has become, a diverse melting pot of many different people and cultures that have the ability to come together in celebration of a symbolic patronage that unites us all. Back in 1781, a band of settlers founded their town, El Pueblo de Nuestra Señora de Los Ángeles, with a mass and procession in honor of Our Lady of Angels. This is why we join here today to celebrate and recognize the Queen of Angels Foundation, who are helping revive this traditional custom by sponsoring an annual grand Marian procession and votive mass and a feast in the birthplace of Los Angeles, La Placita, just a few blocks away from here, as you know. So next Saturday, September 8th, the Queen of Angels Foundation invites all of Los Angeles, from all denominations and walks of life, to join in the procession in celebration of our city's namesake. The procession will begin at 2:30 p.m. at La Placita Church and will travel on Main Street and on Temple Street and will lead into the Cathedral of Our Lady of Angels Courtyard. There will be performances of bagpipes and astic troupe that will highlight the event. And let me say, nothing shows like the diversity of this great city by performances like this. So we welcome all Angelinos, and I want to thank the foundation for their wonderful work, not only because it represents the birth of this great city, traditions of this great city, but also represents the strength of this great city, and that is its diversity, being ethnic, religious, or anything else. So ladies and gentlemen, if you could please help me in thanking the foundation for their wonderful work, as I mentioned, and for encouraging them to continue doing this work, which will continue to strengthen this great city of angels. So on behalf of the city, thank you so much. This is our resolution signed by the mayor and all the council members thanking you for your work, and like I said, to encourage you to keep doing your work, and we will see you all on the 8th. Congratulations and thank you very, very much.
Okay, Councilman LaBange, a few words?
Mr. Weezer, thank you very much for your leadership on this and the Queen of Angels Foundation to connect the birthplace of Los Angeles to the cathedral is an excellent program, and I know I'm going to be there and walk. I was there last year on the inaugural walk, and it builds every year, so it's just so special. And I know this weekend, we have another walk, some do all the way from Mission San Gabriel to the Plaza, but they'll also have one from where the founding of the pueblo was, right near where the river is, where like Track 12 is at Union Station, and that's where the city started. We'll walk up to the Plaza. Your leadership is great on this, Mr. Weezer, but it doesn't happen with the people for the Queen of Angels Foundation. And I want to thank the Queen of Angels Foundation, because the other day I took my son by the old Queen of Angels Hospital, and I told him I was born there, and he wanted to know why it wasn't still the Queen of Angels Hospital, but that's another story. Congratulations and thank you. It'll be a great day. Everybody is welcome from all walks, all denominations. What a special day it will be for the City of Angels. Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Councilman LaBange. Councilman Weezer?
Now, Mr. President, thank you for those words, Mr. LaBange. Mark Albert is the Chairman of the Board, and he will share a few words with us.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Weezer so much for supporting us and giving us this commendation. It means a lot to the board and all the volunteers and groups that we represent to have this acknowledgement. I also want to thank the entire City Council and the mayor, and in particular also Councilman Tom LaBange, who got her back from the beginning and gave wind to our sails to get going, and also Councilman Jan Perry, who's going to be attending in person with Councilman LaBange and Councilman Weezer to the festivities on September 8th. The Queen of Angels Foundation is bringing together over 50 different communities to celebrate the birthday of Los Angeles. We are going to do so on the second Saturday of September every year. Rich and poor, from the most dispossessed undocumented recent immigrants to the most established citizens without regard of race, ethnic background, gender preference, or sexual orientation, all the children of Eve that make up this great city can come together to celebrate the birthday of this city in all of its diversity, in unity, in love, and reconciliation. We have so much to be proud of in this great but troubled city, and to celebrate our founding and all of its diversity and joy, calling out for the blessings of the Blessed Mother, for our city's leaders and religious and civic leaders and all the inhabitants can only be blessings for all of us. I want to thank in particular the Archdiocese of Los Angeles for its full support and our new Archbishop Gomez for his blessings. I want also to thank the City Council and the mayor for their support and also the Los Angeles Police Department for their support. They lead our parade every year with their color guard and their emerald core. They lead our procession, and they protect us in the streets, representing all the government servants in the city that help and protect all of us. So God bless you all. We're very grateful.
Thank you, Mark. And now we will hear from Nancy Erdal, the Director for the Queen of Angels Foundation.
Good morning. I'm a native Angelino, and for years I've been very jealous of my friends and family in New York for St. Patrick's Day and in New Orleans for Mardi Gras. Now we Angelinos have something to celebrate that is unique, special to our city, and if you're not there to party with us on September 8th, you're missing a great time. Please come.
Thank you.
Mr. LaBange, do they want to miss the bagpipes? I don't want to miss the astic dancers, and there's going to be a lot of other festivities, right, Mr. LaBange?
Thank L.A. DOT officers for blocking the roads to make it safe. You got to remember them, too.
And Mark, you want to also let us know who's here as well?
I'd like to thank my entire board, as I said, represents community service organizations that help thousands of people every day in the city, but also particularly my wife, Anna Maria Albert, who's our Executive Director. God bless her. Nothing's possible with me without her. And also Nancy Erdal, our Vice President and Archdiocent Relations Ambassador, Charles Colum, our Historian and Website Content Editor, and Harry Tarnoff from the Order of St. Lazarus, who represents our ecumenical outreach, because we reach out to Catholics and non-Catholics alike. God bless you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we also have Dennis Rodriguez back here, who helped get this event together. Thank you very much, Dennis. So once again, thank you for your work, and this is great that we celebrate this event each and every year. This is the second year, but we hope that we continue on to make this. Fifty years from now, we'll look back and think about when it all first started to continue the traditions here in this great city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Weezer, for that presentation. And as our guests exit the chamber, Mr. Clerk, what do we have next?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number two, called special for Councilmember Englander.
Councilman Englander, are we ready for item number two?
Yes, please. Thank you. If I can call up Mr. Rafael Bernardino... Bernardino.
Bernard.
I pronounced that incorrectly. Apologize. Apologize. Like Bernardino. Like Sam Bernardino. How are you?
Very well, thank you, Councilman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, first, I want to thank you for your years of volunteer service with the City of Los Angeles and everything you've done in the past and your previous commission appointments as well, and you've served us well.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it. We've already had you in commission, so we'll go ahead and, and we grilled you there. It was, we, we put you under the scope, and, and so if you could just share with us, what are the things you want to focus on, and what do you hope to bring to the table, and, and what do you want to do on, on the police commission?
Thank you, Councilman. Also, I'd like to thank President Weston for allowing me here this morning, joined by my mother and my sister, and it is an honor for me to be here before the city council today. Before I get to your question, if I may say just two things. First, I would like to thank the mayor for appointing me for this commission. I share the mayor's strong commitment to law enforcement, and as you noted, he previously appointed me to the Proposition Q Citizen Oversight Commission, and most recently to the Los Angeles Fire Police Pension Commission. Second, I would like to thank you, Councilman, and your colleagues on public safety. You shared with me your concerns, particularly you, Councilman Englander, you were very generous with your time, letting me know the concerns you had, the insights you provided into what our role would be on the police commission and some of the challenges we would face in the future. And I appreciate the efforts of Councilman Zine and Buscaino also in letting me know what your concerns are. Through your questions, I think I understand what you're concerned about, and I will do my best to address those. As for me, I think I've prepared for this my entire life. I'm an attorney, with the exception of the time when I lived and worked in Washington, D.C., when I worked for the Department of Justice. I've lived and worked in Los Angeles my entire life. I went to the University of Southern California, where I received my degree in economics, and then went to USC Law School, where I was on the Law Review. After graduation, I clerked for Judge Manuel El Real, who was then the chief judge of this judicial district. Subsequently, I worked at the Department of Justice, where I was advisor to Attorney General Meese and Thornburg on issues of intelligence policy, ethics, and domestic law enforcement. Upon returning home to Los Angeles, I've worked in private practice, where I've represented mostly large institutions in high-stakes litigation. I believe that my experience and training, both at the Department of Justice and in private practice, is going to provide me with the tools necessary to evaluate the important issues that we face, such as effective law enforcement and risk management, which I know you and I both share a great concern with. And respectfully, I have some ideas, what I've gathered from you, and other thoughts. But the, the events of the past month, I think, highlight an area where I think I'll bring something to the table that's less tangible but equally important. I'm Mexican-American. I speak Spanish. I live in the San Fernando Valley. I intend to address those two constituencies on a regular basis, and I would hope that everyone here would let me know where I need to go, where people need to be heard, and where people want to have their voices heard. As Commissioner, Councilman Zine pointed out, you know, I'm, I'm active in a broad range of charitable and professional groups of size, different sizes, different demographics, and I think that's going to put me in a unique position to address the issues in this great and diverse city. In terms of specifics, I just know what an informed citizen knows, and I'm sure I'll know more. In the past month, there've been a number of issues that have come up that are going to require the police commission's attention, in fact, two this morning, that are brand-new. And if you have questions, perhaps I can dialogue with that. But the thing that I also want to say, in terms of how I want to approach this, is that I intend to reach out to all the men and women who protect and serve this city. I want to know what they do, share with them what they do, so that way I can know how to address issues as they arise, both in the context of their experience and in overall for representing this city. There's only five commissioners, and there's four million citizens, so I need to know to do that. And I hope, Councilman, that at the end of my tenure, I'll be able to say to you and to Councilman Buscaino and to Councilman Zine especially, that I met every woman and man who wears this uniform, and I shook their hands, and I intend to make that, if I don't do anything else, I plan to do that.
Thank you very much. I'd like to give the opportunity to my colleagues to ask some questions as well, particularly since this is one of the most important commissions in the City of Los Angeles.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you. You live in the district, which is a new district. I know you, for the valley. Where'd you go to high school?
I went to high school in La Marada.
La Marada, La Marada High?
La Marada High School. It's in the county.
Sure, I got that. Right there, Rosecrans, right out there. Used to be Fields out there.
Yes, sir.
That's right. You told me that. I just didn't recall it. But anyway, here's the question. Preparedness is so important. The police department are 24 hours a day operational. I hope that you, along with the others, continue the issue of earthquake preparedness. Dr. Jones has been very active lately, Lucy Jones, and discussing the swarms out in Brawley. Preparedness is so important, and we're there. And also, I say this loud and clear, members, I'm for take-home cars for our officers who have responsibilities citywide, because when the earthquake comes, they got to get into Los Angeles to help us. That's a point I want to make to you, too. Next thing, traffic safety. You live in the valley, you know there was a tragic accident on the 405 a few weekends ago, just this week, a so sad accident on Highland, where an impatient driver went around the platoon of cars, and a family of three lost their life. South Los Angeles is a traffic situation. Traffic safety, put that in your challenge to, to, to be the voice for that, because traffic, if I could look out at this audience, I know everybody here is affected by traffic and mobility, and that affects your, your, your being. So I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate your energy, which is so important, and the fact that you have such an impressive resume. So I have a strong recommendation, Mr. President, preparedness and also traffic safety. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, traffic safety is important, liability is critical.
Yes.
And as you know, coming from the real world, liability with the City of Los Angeles, the dollars we pay out continuously. A situation occurred last evening, individual stole a police car, crashed the police car, serious injuries. The situation that's recently hit the news, you know, we look at Santa Ana, and we look at Fullerton, and we say, okay, but then it seems to come full circle back to Los Angeles, and it's critical on that liability issue that we have a very aggressive stand. What this chief has done, which is basically unprecedented, is the removal of command staff in the particular situation that's currently hit the news, but we take that very, very seriously. When we deal with the liability issue, they look at the dollars, the millions of dollars that are paid out because of one incident. I'm a strong advocate of video, in-car video. We're doing an analysis to find out how many complaints are adjudicated because in-car video either sustained or did not sustain. So while these other issues in law enforcement are very, very important, what's draining this budget continuously is the liability, internal, external, and we have to have a very aggressive stand on that. We want professional police officers. We want to protect the public. It can't be, we protect them today, we let them go tomorrow, but it's got to be consistent, and that liability is something that really troubles me, that we really haven't tackled it as we need to, because you look at the payouts that continually happen. It's, we are now in the news again, just because of some situations that have taken place. I think the chief has handled it appropriately, taken a very aggressive stand on it, but you, as a commissioner, set that policy, and that policy is critical for the protection of people of Los Angeles. If you can comment on the liability issues and how we can address risk management.
Well, briefly, with all due respect, Councilman, that is, the liability is an important issue, both in terms of liability to the public for civil rights, or liability for other sorts of negligence or other car accidents, traffic accidents, but we also have internal liability issues in terms of employment. And as I discussed, the, the issue that troubles me is we have such a high workers' comp liability. Our workers' compensation liability, Councilman, is greater than all of our other liability every year, and it's every year. We have 10,000 officers, approximately, and we have a little over 3,000 workers' comp claims every year. That's one out of three. Respectfully, I don't know what the issue is there. I mean, perhaps we can develop incentives, perhaps we have to develop punishments, but respectfully, I think that punishments and incentives only work along the margins. What we need is leadership from within the department, from ourselves. We need oversight and leadership, and also the leadership and concern from members, respected members like yourself and the other councilmen. So I think we need to look at this holistically, because, for example, the, the accident this morning, the car theft.
Stolen police car.
Stole police car. I don't know what the details are, other than what was in the news this morning. I don't know if it was a traffic stop, and they have to leave the car running. I don't know what the circumstances were, but I do know that that incident is going to lead to a lawsuit. This individual lost one or both legs, and otherwise, the incident that has gained so much notoriety, the nurse, Ben Foothill, that's going to be a lawsuit.
Right.
Those issues, perhaps better training, perhaps better understanding, but we need to tie the two together, because although those incidents are tragic for the people involved, the nurse that's hurt or otherwise, the citizens of Los Angeles are also hurt here, because, you know, I'm a lawyer, and when I see that, I see it a little differently than someone else do. I see it as, that's $400,000 in legal fees, and that's a potential $2 million case. And, you know, when I look at the City of Los Angeles, made up of working men and women, especially in these difficult times, you know, $2.5 million for 10 seconds of bad judgment is a cost benefit that we cannot afford. So respectfully, I don't know what the answer is, but I will tell you that I will work hard at it. And as I told Councilman Englander when we met, is, if there's an area where I will put most of my emphasis, I think it's going to be that, because I think with my experience, I think that's the best place for me to focus.
Just one follow-up question. Physical fitness. There used to be a physical fitness standard. You go to the academy, you're in great physical shape. We used to have annual physical fitness, Centennial Seating Hospital, they've all been done away with, and I think that needs to be examined also, because when you look at injured on duty, a lot of the situations are, people aren't staying in shape for whatever reason. When you look at that huge category of liability, that's something else can tag into.
Respectfully, my work on pensions demonstrated that, because we had a number of disability claims, and a number of disability claims, often they're for accidents, car accidents. I would say most of them were for car accidents, but the few that weren't for car accidents were for heart conditions, stress-related, essentially overweight, or other health issues.
Right.
And when we lose an officer for health issues, not only does the city pay disability pension, but we lose an officer, we lose man-hours, we lose the training, we lose that investment.
You got my vote.
Thank you. Mr. Wizar.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You have some special guests with you today.
I have some special guests, my beautiful wife, my son Simone, my daughter Isabella, my other daughter Amelia, and we left one at home. Thank you. They wanted to make sure that Mr. Bernardino's recommendation moves forward. No, but thank you. I've known Mr. Bernardino for some time, and I just want to thank you for the charitable work you've been doing for a number of years. I think that shows that you not only are, are concerned about what happens in our city, but you're willing to give of your time, so we really want to thank you for that. Now, taking on this appointment is, as you know, will take a lot of your time as well, so we want to thank you for that. But first, let me state that, given some of the recent incidents, I fully support what the chief of police has been doing to ensure that we have the public's confidence that we are moving forward in ensuring that we have a safe city. And I'm just grateful that we're going to have someone like you that's level-headed, experienced, to make decisions, and to work with the chief of police and all rank-and-file officers to continue to make the safe city. So I just want to stand up and, Mr. President, say, this has my full support. I know him for some time, and will make a great addition to the police commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you very much, President Weston.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to item 14, called special by Mr. Sacks. Okay, if we could clear the podium area.
Just thank you very quickly, item 14, you want increased support for police and community activities in Council District 8. $30,000, that's a miniscule amount for increased police activity, police support and community activities. And in addition, I understood from one of the articles in the newspaper that USC was also picking up the cost for extra police activity in the area. So how is this $30,000, which come out to what, less than $2,000, excuse me, $2,500 a month? How will that impact the community at $2,500 a month? You just heard the first speaker talk about how the first person getting a presentation, they spent like millions of dollars for an auditorium at the school. How is $2,500 going to impact the community for, for any period of time?
Oh, thank you. Mr. Sacks, if you could please stay close, the next three items, I think you're, you're on. There are no speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 15, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Again, one of my favorite subjects, AB 1290 funds. Councilman Buscaino moving AB 1290 funds, $183,000. I've got to admit, I'm pretty impressed with the councilman's actions with the AB 1290 funds. I think he's allocated close to $1 million in the time that he's been sitting on the city council, so I was just out of curiosity, was wondering, in the same timeframe, because that's rolled over money from, that's collect, sent back by the state regarding CRA funding, and since CRA funding was, was just cut off this past year, how much of that money was Janice Hahn spending, you know, and, and the rest of the councilmen? If he's allocating $1 million out of his council district for AB 1290 funds, the council districts and the council districts that also obtained the AB 1290 funds, where's your money going to?
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, this moved to 16, Mr. Sacks.
16 is a personal service contract for $20,000 starting July 1st to December 31st in 2012. Considering July, you're on summer recess, does this person get paid for the month of July, or is that just like a month, a month vacation? And for Mr. Reyes's council district, we heard so eloquently from Councilman Reyes that his council district doesn't have the money for sidewalk repairs because of lack of funding, and he doesn't have AB 1290 funds, although he does have AB 1290 funds, he just doesn't want to use them for that. But he's got $20,000 for a personal service contract, which surprisingly is almost 66% of the amount of money that Councilman Parks wants to use for police and community activities in District 8. I'm surprised they don't have the need for that in District 1 also.
Okay, there are no speakers on the queue. Mr. Englander.
Just wanted to point out, if I could, that there was a statement made about council recess. While when we do go on council recess, our offices are not closed. In fact, we have a lot going on throughout our districts, and, and staff is constantly working, so it doesn't close the city down, nor the council offices.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Englander. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 17, Mr. Arnold Sacks, Dr. Tom Williams. Dr. Williams? Come on, guys, let's don't, first one up. Yes, sir.
Well, he was still up. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council, Land Use Committee Chair. U R S. I used to work for them. Six years I worked for them doing Six years I worked for them doing environmental work. That was before they moved to Nevada, when they were a California company. This is an extension of a 13-year contract for another year? At three times the annual average rate that they had charged before? Only $1.3 million. What did they do for Wrexham Park? Well, they didn't seem to do very much of anything because the Autry National Center, EIR, failed. The other operations under CEQA seemed to be failing. So I'm quite concerned about supporting a Nevada corporation rather than a California corporation because neighborhood councils were told, hey, get most of your expenses in the city of LA, not even the county of LA. So why do we, don't, sorry, don't we have competent people within the city of Los Angeles to do this work? And maybe they'd do a better job than URS, although a long time ago, they did a very good job with me. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. You could correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that the council spent a considerable amount of times in a hearing regarding local contracts awarding 8% differential to local businesses. And I believe the city attorney that was here defined local as county and state. And so you had spent all that time, actually wasted all that time, redefining local to be local local. So here, a Nevada corporation, again, going right in the face, practice what we do, not what we say. Practice what we say, not what we do. Which side is up? Which side is down? Local hiring, local corporation. You worked on the legislation, follow through on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sacks. Let's prepare to vote on that, members. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now what I'm going to do is I'm going to call three people up for general public comment. Arnold Sacks, Claudia, F. Claudio Bovell, and Dr. Tom Williams, if you please come forward. Come on, Mr. Williams, don't wait on him, just come on. And F. Claudio, go right ahead, Tom.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council, also member of the No 710 movement. And what has happened this week? We had a resolution on Tuesday. Hey, that was great. We had a meeting on Monday that was even greater. However, yesterday, the representative of the city of Los Angeles from the Central Planning Commission didn't say a word regarding the presentation of alternatives, including F7 and all the other Fs and all the other Hs, in the Stakeholders Oversight Advisory Committee. It's disrespectful to walk in front of a speaker. At least Mr. Reyes knows that. Thank you. Similarly, the L.A. DOT, Renegade Department, under your policies, didn't say a word in the Technical Advisory Committee for 710. Not a word. Oh, by the way, the alternatives were being discussed and he didn't present any of the opinions of this council. So maybe we need an ordinance that would be enforceable regarding all of our commissioners that are assigned to stakeholder committees and to departments that are in the Technical Advisory Committees. What is the power of a resolution of this council? Doesn't seem to be much because you can't even influence those people who are within the city organization. So I'd highly recommend that you prepare an ordinance for it and get rid of the threat of the highways and the freeways of the 710. Thank you.
Now, if we could please keep it quiet in council chambers so that we could hear our speakers. And most of the noise seems to be coming from our side of the building and not our visitor's side. Yes, sir.
My name is F. Claudio Bovell. I'm here to address the topic of capital improvement. As you know, the Gloria Holmes and Johnson-John apartment complex has been in the news lately in regards to capital improvement. And the reason I'm here, because I'm asking the city council to help me and the residents and the seniors to review or review or inspect the language of capital improvement because right now, capital improvement has been used to take advantage of the tenants in regards to more money for the owners and so forth. And the reason I'm here, because the problem that I have is that the owner was given documentation, certified letter, pictures of the damage of the property that existed 10 years ago. 10 years ago, the owner did not want to do any repairs to the property. 10 years later, now they want to improve or renovate the condition of the property. There's something wrong with that picture. Mr. Weston, I've been to your office, and Ms. Billy, very lovely lady, tried to help me as much as I could and helped the tenants. Mr. Andrew Westhall tried to help me as much as he could. But I'm sort of disappointed with two of the individuals that work at Mr. Weston's office in Western. They lied to the tenants, they did not help us, they misled myself and the tenants in regards to the help that we were seeking. And all I'm asking is the city council is to review the language of the capital improvement because right now, a lot of owners are taking advantage with that capital improvement in regards to passing the costs on, especially to the seniors and the tenants. And all I'm asking for a council to have someone meet with me so I can show them my evidence, documentation, pictures, certified letters, information that the owners knew about these problems 10 years ago, they did nothing about it. Now they want to renovate the property. Why? Because of Metro Train and USC is right around the corner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. And thank you for clarifying that about the council offices being closed but still being open. So that means instead of $5,000 a month, he was now making, instead of $6,000 a month, he's making $5,000 a month. That changes that a lot. Back to the sidewalks and the park routine that's been going on in the city council. And the news that came out about the parquetts, because back in May, when Councilman Garcetti mentioned, here's a story from 5112, private-public partnerships to help reverse LA cutbacks for park funding. It was mentioned that they put out a call for grants. And then, so it would have taken time for the applications. Why wasn't the fact that these parquet program or the leadership in LA regarding parquetts are following San Francisco or following New York, where is that leadership in LA come from? And by the way, just so you know, another thing you can follow up on, the city of Long Beach is looking into selling the carbon rights that are, the offsets that are created by the trees in the city. Maybe you could look into that for funding. The status of the arena, we haven't heard anything about that. We heard some discussion about wanting to sell the convention center. And how exactly would that work out? Because the city council, a few years ago, sold the advertising rights or guaranteed the advertising rights to AEG for billboards on the convention center. So how would you sell the convention center when somebody else owns the billboard rights for that convention center? How does that work out? Is that one of those public-private partnerships that we always hear about? More news in the future.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go to item 21 after these last two speakers. Daniel Jordan Jones, Jose Libera, Librea. Jose, please come forward. Mr. Jones, good to see you, sir.
Good morning, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pride and honor to be here, it truly is. I'm upset about this picture right here. You want to know why? It's the Department of Homeland Security's taking a picture of me, and I got the proof of the camera in the back of the plane. Two days ago, when I served the governor of the state of California to call support the California State Militia, the California Highway Patrol, I, as having all rights and privileges in the state of California and resident and a citizen of the United States and an armed service veteran, honorable, served, I'm going to officially state that there's a state of war emergency. And if Councilman Parks in this room can tell me that it's illegal, he's probably the only one that doesn't. If anybody else in the state doesn't believe me, contact the law library, down at the law library, because she's the one that told me to come up and say this to you. You've been served by her. She's had enough to hear with this stuff, with due process rights. And my right to defend it would be defended by the California State Militia, the California Highway Patrol. My name is on the last, my name is on the Constitution of the state of California. And my right, as my mom delivered it to my brain and my dad threw his hand, it will survive into perpetuity. That, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Librea, please come forward.
Mi nombre es José Lovera. Soy padre, abuelo y esposo. Tengo 72 años. 25 de ellos los he dedicado a trabajar con orgullo en el aeropuerto de LAX.
Good morning. My name is José Lovera. I am a father, grandfather, and husband. I am 72 years old, and 25 of them, I have proudly worked at the LAX airport.
Nunca pensé que a mi edad la compañía a la cual he dedicado 10 años de servicio, me iba a dejar al abandono y desesperado de ver a mi esposa sufrir con su enfermedad que casi es terminal porque avisos de cigarros quitaron nuestra cobertura familiar.
I never thought that at my age, the company I dedicated 10 years of service was going to abandon me and leave me desperate to see my wife suffering with her disease when ABSG cut our family coverage.
Mi esposa es mi vida, y gracias a bienes de cigarros se me ha hecho muy difícil poder ayudarla cuando más me necesita.
My wife is my life, and thanks to ABSG, it is very difficult for me to help her when she needs me the most.
Hoy avisos de cigarros está aquí para convencerlos de lo que la compañía hizo. Es algo que nosotros los trabajadores quisimos, pero eso es mentira.
Today, ABSG is here to convince you that the company, what the company did is because we, the workers, wanted it, but it is a lie.
Si no fuera por la manera en que nos intimidan, este salón estuviera lleno de trabajadores demandando justicia.
Yeah, if it wasn't because of the way that they intimidate us, this room would be full of workers just demanding justice.
En vez, avisos de cigarros trajo a esos trabajadores para fingir ante ustedes que están felices.
Yeah, instead, ABSG, they brought workers to make you think that they're very happy.
Y que no quieren que la compañía recibe el castigo que se merece.
And that they don't want that the company receives the punishment that they deserve.
Ayer nos enteramos que la compañía pagaría por venir aquí para defenderla. Mi palabra no está en venta.
Yeah, yesterday, I found out that they were going to pay the workers to come here to defend the company, but my word is not for sale.
Yo terminé de trabajar esta mañana a las 5 de la mañana, y aún estoy aquí sin pago y sin miedo hablando por aquellos trabajadores que no pudieron estar aquí por miedo de perder su trabajo.
I got out of work today at 5:00 a.m., and even though I am tired, I am here without pay and without fear. I am talking for those workers that weren't able to come here because of fear to lose their work.
Y por mi esposa, que por décadas me ha acompañado en esta larga jornada, que es mi vida. Gracias.
Yeah, and for my wife, that for decades, she has been my partner in this path that is my life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will temporarily suspend general public comment and go to item 21. Mr. Reyes, I have cards on that item. Did you want me to call the cards first or did you want to open?
Let's hear the cards first.
Okay. Maria Elena Durazo, Pablo Alvarado, Gilbert Cao, Sito Sun Young Yang, please come forward. Called four names, I see only one person. If I called your name, please come in, get behind Mr. Durazo. Good to see you.
Good morning, President and City Council members. Maria Elena Durazo with the LA Federation of Labor. I'm here to urge you to support the resolution in support of the Trust Act that is now on the governor's desk. California is not Arizona. We know the discriminatory laws that have been used in Arizona to racially profile people in that state. We are not a state that does things out of creating fear. We need the Trust Act to rebuild trust in law enforcement. Also, we don't want our resources going to the wrong priorities and to be able to focus on crime reduction in Los Angeles. Those are the things that matter. And it matters that in terms of priorities for immigration, it should not be on people who work hard every day who might get ticket for jaywalking. That's not what this was supposed to be, secure communities. So we want the opposite of what's happening in Arizona. We want the opposite of what's happening in Alabama and Georgia. That's not what California is. So we urge you to please support the resolution in support of the Trust Act and call on Governor Brown to sign the legislation that has already been approved in California. Thank you very much.
So the three speakers I called, they're not here? If I called, you come up to the mic. And then if you're next, you go behind him, Ms. Yang, followed by Dominguez Clean Car Wash Campaign, Nettie Dominguez. Okay, Pablo, right? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My name is Pablo Alvarado. I am the director of the National Day Labor Network. We are, our headquarters are here in Los Angeles. I am here to urge you to support this resolution for the Trust Act for the following reasons. The Trust Act will alleviate the suffering that the separation of families is causing in our communities. People, mothers who are simply driving with a broken tail light shouldn't end up in removal proceedings, simply, as simple as that. The second reason why we need to support a Trust Act is because it restores the trust between community and our police officers. The third reason is because it codifies Special Order 40. It makes sure that Special Order 40 works. When the Secure Communities Program was instituted, it undermined the implementation of Special Order 40. So the Trust Act makes sure that it's respected and that it's implemented. The other reason why we need to support the Trust Act and why I urge you to pass this resolution today is because it ensures that the Secure Communities Program goes back to its original intent, which was meant to go after people who have committed serious violations of the law. So that's why it is essential that you pass this resolution today on our behalf of our community. Thank you so much. Los Angeles has to be better than Maricopa County. California has to be better than Georgia and Alabama. And by passing this resolution today, you're going to be making our state better than those places. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Yang?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Sun Young Yang, lead organizer of the Bus Riders Union and the Labor Community Strategy Center. And I'm here today on behalf of my organization and our 3,000 dues-paying members to urge every council member to support the resolution that is in front of you today, to support the Trust Act and make sure that LA City Council's message is strong to Governor Jerry Brown to sign off on the Trust Act. This is a very, very, very evident thing to do, a moral thing to do in terms of, you know, supporting families who are living in fear of one day... know, supporting families who are living in fear of one day having their family members not come back and not have any access to finding them. These kinds of incidents where our members, neighbors and friends have gone months without hearing from, you know, a father, a family member, because they got detained and there was no way to communicate with them. Secure communities is a, is a failed system. It separates families. It, you know, puts people in fear, living in fear. And we can't continue to have LA County to continue to be the county that detains and deportes people the most in this country. We talk about Arizona being, you know, Arpaio, being, being a horrible anti-immigrant racist, you know, person who's also promoting, you know, anti-immigrant policies, but actually, if you look at the numbers, LA County is actually the biggest deporter in the nation. And so, we need to fix this. And I think LA City Council can also take a stand in the right direction. And I really do want to thank the leadership of, you know, Councilmember Jose Wezard and Reyes and other council members who have put this resolution today in front of the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gilbert Salcedo? Or just State just?
Nettie Dominguez with the Clean Car Wash Campaign.
Got you.
I'm here on behalf of our organization to say that LA has to be the leader on this, that we have the opportunity to do this, but I'm actually going to give up my time to one of our members, Isaac Álvarez, that wants to share a little bit of why this is so important for us.
Wait a second. Would you tell him? We don't allow people to give up their time.
Okay.
So, what we will do is after he speaks, he needs to fill out a card and give it to the sergeant, and I will allow him to speak. But in the future, when you fill out a card, I want to hear from you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
My nombre es Isaac Álvarez.
My name is Isaac Álvarez.
Soy miembro de la campaña Clean Car Wash.
I am a member of the Clean Wash Campaign.
I quiero pedir el apoyo de todos los concejales. Yo vivo aquí en la ciudad de, en el condado de Los Ángeles.
I live in the county of Los Angeles, and I want to ask the support of all the council members.
Y pienso que la resolución del acta de confianza devolverá a todos los, los que vivimos acá en el condado de Los Ángeles para confiar en la policía.
I think that the resolution of this Trust Act will give the members in the county of Los Angeles trust towards the police.
Porque toda la comunidad que vivimos acá tenemos a veces temor de decir lo que pasa, de acercarnos a un policía.
The community that live here, sometimes we have fear, fear to say what happens here and to approach a police.
Y no queremos que pase lo que está pasando en Arizona. A manera personal, yo viví tres años en el condado de Maricopa.
Yeah, I don't want that in Los Angeles happens what happened in Maricopa, and personally, I lived three years in Maricopa.
Y sé lo que se siente, el temor de que la policía te detenga y pregunte tu estatus migratorio.
And I know what it is to feel the fear that the police approach you and ask you for your status.
Y no quiero volver a tener ese temor de que la policía algún día me detenga y me pregunte por, por mi estatus.
Yeah, I don't want to feel this, that same fear to have a police approach me and ask me for my status.
Es por eso que pido el apoyo para que el gobernador Brown firme esta resolución.
That is why I ask the support, your support for Governor, Governor Brown to sign this.
Gracias.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And Ms. Dominguez, make sure he fills out one of the cards and then give it to the sergeant so I'll have him on record.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. So, do I have Gilbert Salcedo? Barbara, I think it's Moore. Barbara Moore, are you here? Please come forward. Arnold Sacks and Aldalberto Moreno. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Barbara Moore. I live in Canoga Park, California. I was actually raised there, went to an audio elementary, Hughes Middle School and Canoga Park High School. So, Councilman Zine, it's good to be here today. I speak in behalf of and hope that the council will vote in favor of this resolution to support the Trust Act in California. People, I am a member of the Legislative Ministry of the Unitarian Universalists Association in California, and people in the religious community are joining together in support of this act also. Community can't be destroyed by isolating and alienating its members. Earlier today, someone spoke regarding the sheriff's program that worked with youth and what a positive program that was. The City of Angels group came and talked about all of the people in Los Angeles being welcomed to their celebration, documented or undocumented. And I hope that the council will open its arms to all of the members of the community of California and support the Trust Act, create safe communities with good relations with our police. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, followed by Moreno, Aldalberto Moreno. Yes, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. This is just the state of California putting a Band-Aid on a mosquito bite on the back of an elephant. Why don't you ask the state legislation to send a resolution to Washington to ask for clarification on the immigration policy? That's where the trouble is. One state has this policy, another state has that policy. And I'd like to point out, a few years ago, and I had to sit in the county, county board of supervisors meeting, there was a young black child murdered by somebody who'd been released, who evidently should have had an immigration hold on him as a gang member, but he was out of jail after two days, shot and killed somebody. And then you had the ultra group, the Minutemen, and a bunch of other people come down to the county board of supervisors and argue on behalf...
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Okay, do I have, Mr. Moreno? Come forward, please.
Good morning, council members. My name is Adalberto Moreno, and I urge you to, to pass the resolution for the Trust Act. And just one story that I had very shortly. I met this, I had this friend whose parents were deported and whose, they didn't have any criminal records at all. Both parents were deported. My friend stayed and supported her two minors, brother and sister, and this, this is not what America is all about, you know? This is not what we are here, we are here to make this country better for our families and for our members, for our communities. And so, this is, we, we don't need this to continue to allow to happen in our communities because this is not Arizona, and we don't need any more Arizonas anymore here. And we need to step up and then we need to urge that we don't need any more states unimmigrant because we contributed, we contribute a lot to this country. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, in California alone, 80,000 immigrants have been deported since the inception of federal government's Secure Communities deportation program. As of July 2012, data shows that 69% of deportations were of people not convicted of a crime or convicted of only minor offenses. The Trust Act establishes standards for local governments to ensure that an individual will only be detained if that individual has been convicted of a serious or violent felony. Assemblymember Amiano in his bill states clearly that statewide standards for local governments to not submit to ICE's request to detain an individual unless the individual has a serious or violent felony conviction, or the individual was charged by a district attorney with a serious or violent felony. So, what this provides are safeguards, provides safeguards for our community. It reinforces the federal law. The federal law was designed to go after felons, people who committed serious crimes. What's happening today is a whole net is caused, is cast upon a whole community. And as you've heard, you've got families being broken up. You have individuals who might have a broken headlight or taillight, get pulled over, they get detained, they wait anywhere between six to 18 days, and then they're deported. All the while, no one is contacted. The families are desperately looking for their parents and/or their family, but they've been, they've disappeared. Assemblymember Amiano actually points to a case where a woman selling tamalas was arrested, spent 18 days in jail, then was deported. This is not the spirit of the law that was presented by the federal government. We are hurting our communities because we're eliminating confidence, we're deteriorating trust. Witnesses who should be able to step up and help the police are no longer stepping up. Victims, especially domestic violence, women who are basically being beaten by family members are not calling for support because they could be deported. There's a whole list of issues that we could address with this support and sending this message to the governor. Colleagues, I ask you, what type of America do we have? I ask you, what kind of America do we want? And I tell you that the Trust Act can reinforce those very same values that allows us to be proud to be Americans and not allow folks to be victimized because they are hardworking people. I ask you to support me. I want to thank Councilman Wezar for his support, for allowing this type of presence so that you can see how important it is to the majority of the people that live in this great city. I ask for your eye vote in supporting item 21 and send a message to the governor to sign the Trust Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. West and Mr. Reyes, and to the members who came here today from the community. This is important. Unless we have trust in all people, we are not successful. Those who do violate the laws in the degree that they should be have to face the consequences like everybody. But in this particular case, it's hurting communities, and it's a challenge, and this state law will improve California and include all the great people from Eureka to San Diego. Thank you very much. Yes, vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, we all know how successful Special Order has been in the city of Los Angeles, Special Order 40 has been in the city of Los Angeles to reduce crime and improve public safety. It allows people to feel comfortable to approach police officers, whether they are victims or witnesses of crime, and our police chief is strongly in favor of Special Order 40. Unfortunately, because of the Secure Act, the Secure Communities Program, the federal government has now come and has put that rule in danger of not being effective because that program has put fear into many people not willing to talk to our LAPD, whether they are victims of domestic violence or victims of other violence, or whether they have witnessed a crime. This law here, which is before the governor right now, will allow us to correct that. And it says something very simple that I think we will all agree. It says it would set clear standards for local governments to not submit to ICE's request to detain an individual unless the individual has a serious or violent felony conviction, or the individual was charged by a district attorney with a serious or violent felony. I think we could all agree with that. What we don't agree with is how very innocent people who are trying to make a living, trying to reach the American dream, are being deported and held in our jails for longer than most other regular citizens would. It is unfair, it is unjust, and we want to make sure that we get this tool back so that we could continue to improve public safety here in the city of Los Angeles, support those who are trying to make a living, and show this to the world that in Los Angeles, we still believe in the American dream, and we're trying to create policies to make that possible. So, thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, for your leadership. Thank you to all of you who came out today. Your advocacy, March's urgency has brought us here today. Now, we got to put this passion and energy to the governor to make sure that he signs this immediately. He asked us for a vote not too long ago. He was here with all of us. I remember seeing some of you at some of the rallies. Now, it's our turn to ask him for us to say that we want this now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank my Canoga Park resident for coming down to City Hall today, wherever you are in the audience. Good, good Valley resident coming down. Take the orange line? Okay, excellent. I discussed this with my colleague, Mr. Reyes, and looking at the issue of public safety, oftentimes, there's a concept, and then when it gets put into practice, it doesn't really show the benefit that it was originally designed to do. When I look at this particular measure, it's not going to harm supporting what Mr. Reyes, my colleague, is supporting, it's not going to harm public safety. What it will do is filter those individuals who need to be incarcerated, the people who commit those serious offenses of the law. This doesn't mean that someone commits a crime, they're going to walk out the door, they still have to post bail, go through the system. The difference is, it'll probably expedite the process through the criminal justice system. It won't be a negative to those individuals, they don't need to be treated in that negative fashion for the long-term incarceration, et cetera, and detention. So, I support this. And looking at the coalition of groups that are in favor of it, you've got basically every group that represents the United States of America. It's not just the Latino population, there's many populations that have signed on to this, along with chiefs of police and sheriffs of the different counties throughout the state. So, I hope the governor does sign it. I think it's fair, I think it's equitable, and I think what it will do is not harm our public safety. What it'll do is, those people that need to go for federal violations, who commit serious crimes, I don't think anyone's opposed to people who commit robberies and murders and those very serious crimes, need to have the maximum penalty imposed by law. This doesn't impact those individuals who commit those vicious crimes. When you commit a traffic violation, you get a ticket, you get a warrant for that, you go, you post your bail, you handle it. You shouldn't have to be deported for something like that. The law is not designed to be an immigration law, and I think somehow it's been misinterpreted, and some people have used it as an immigration law. When you find the numbers that they're talking about, that just bleeds the system. We don't have enough room in the system to handle the violent criminals, leave it alone people who commit minor infractions. And there's no one perfect in this world, but this particular misinterpretation that's been done is a disservice to the people, and I think we need to modify this. So, hopefully, the governor will sign it. I'll sign on to you, Mr. Reyes, but there's Middle Eastern groups that have signed on this, Asian groups that have signed on this, it goes across the board. So, it's not just picking on one element of our society, this is going to take care of it for all the folks. And again, thanks to Canoga Park. By the way, Canoga Park, all-American city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. There are no more speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
I'm going to call two more general public comment speakers, Noel Weiss and Mark Gutierrez, if you'd please come forward. Noel Weiss and Mark Gutierrez.
Council members, thank you for your attention, such as it is. There's a, I think, a very thin line between courage and stupidity. There's also a very thin line between competence and luck. CD 15, and this does relate to CD 15, Councilman Buzcayano, we have the Rancho Planes facility, 25 million gallons of butane. For everybody watching, I think that's the largest concentration of butane in the United States. We had what can charitably be called the dog and pony show back in, on June 27th, supposedly, and unfortunately, it never got out of committee, so we can't get a debate. We need to know where our council people stand in terms of basically confronting the risk. It's irresponsible for the council to do nothing. Now, what has been done, again, and Mr. Buzcayano isn't even listening, and I really don't appreciate. No, well, then look at me when you listen. It's important.
Mr. Hold his time. Now, I'm not, now, you calm down. Wait, no, I, Joe, I've got this, I'm the president. Now, Noel, just take a deep breath, calm down, address the council as a whole. You, you know the rules. Just take a deep breath, calm down. Mr. Weiss, go ahead.
Mr. President and council, it is really important that the council listen to the public when they talk. Rarely do you listen to each other, but when the public comes down here, you owe it to the public to listen. You don't, the council as a whole does not do it. And... You don't, the council as a whole, does not do it, and that, as far as I'm concerned, is not right. And the president and the council, I think, it's not unreasonable, Mr. President, to be able to say to the members, point of order, sit and listen. That's all, I think, that the public asks. Going forward, what we need with that Rancho facility are a couple of things. One, an assessment of the insurance. Two, Mr. Buscayano can introduce a motion, putting the boundaries of that facility within the Harbor Department. That will give the Harbor Department the ability to leverage eminent domain against the Pier 400 situation. Three, we need a new law relative to risk management. Contra Costa County has such a law. Do we have that in LA? No. Do we need a debate on that law? Yes, we do. Finally, I would just say that I think it's important that rather than bury this in studies, that we get a debate.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And before I call on Mr. Cardenas, Noel, you've been here for longer than I have. You know, all of us have computer screens that has every speaker, so we don't have to look at you to see you and hear you on the computer screen. We also do more than one thing at a time. I'm listening to you, I'm signing documents or what have you. I respect you. I'm not trying to disrespect you, but I can multitask. I can talk and chew gum at the same time, and I bet that the majority of the members on this council can do the same thing. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I appreciate your confidence in me.
Except for maybe Mr. Cardenas.
In the interest of full disclosure, I think Councilmember Buscayano is a very attentive and good councilman, even though he is a rookie. But at the same time, I do want, in the interest of full disclosure, I do listen sometimes on the screen, sometimes with my ears, sometimes I'm actually looking directly at the speaker. But I do admit, in the interest of full disclosure, Mr. Joel Weiss, Noel, I'm sorry, Noel. Noel Weiss, I must admit, when you talk sometimes, I do tune you out, in the interest of full disclosure.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Do I have Mr. Gutierrez here? Okay, come on, sir.
Hello, my name is Marks Gutierrez. I'm here representing SEIU, United Service Workers West. Today you will hear a little, a lot about choice from Aviation Safeguards, a contractor at the airport, and the workers the company paid and bussed in to speak to you today. I think it's important to note that Aviation Safeguards at LAX workers have made some choices in the past that the company has chosen to disregard. Aviation Safeguards workers chose to join a union, and workers chose full family health coverage when they bargained their contract with the company. Aviation Safeguards did not honor those choices when it walked away from its contract with these workers. We're all for raises. We've always seen them, we've seen the minimum wage mandated at LAX, the mandated living wage as a floor and not a ceiling, and we feel that that's a problem, too. But the union wants to see these workers receiving higher wages and affordable family health care, as the city council intended when it voted for higher benefits for airport workers under the living wage ordinance. In 2009, the city council made a decision that it was in the city's public interest that the airport workers be healthy and that they have access to affordable coverage for themselves and their families. This was done so passengers could be assured of a more stable workforce at LAX. It now appears that Aviation Safeguards did what, wanted to devise a scheme to get rid of the union, and it has resulted in workers having less health coverage, particularly workers with families. Aviation Safeguards is in violation of the living wage law, and the company is going to have to make some tough choices as a result of its false promises to these workers. Under the collective bargaining agreement, all workers and their families had full family health care. That completely, Aviation Safeguards was trying to game the system for its own benefit, leaving taxpayers on the hook. We're pleased to see that the Bureau of Contract Enforcement has stepped in to ensure that the companies operating at the airport are playing by the rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, now we're going to move to item four. Item four, I believe, Mr. Clerk was held special by Mr. Zine.
Yes, it was, Mr. President. Do we have some staff here on this particular?
Yes, there's staff. If staff would please come forward.
Mr. President, if I can give a little introduction to this, community redevelopment was dissolved, and in my district, on Canoga Park, on Sherman Way near Lindley, we have some abandoned buildings that have created a negative situation. I received some letters from local businesses. Revitalized Reseda is concerned, my office is concerned, that this has become an eyesore in the community. So local businesses are concerned, residents are concerned, and it's a total neglected situation. Abandoned buildings, been tagged, graffiti, homeless, trash left there. It's a real unsightly situation, and part of it's owned by the CRA, part by a private individual, and what we need to find out is what we're going to do to clean this mess up. My option is to demolish everything, since they're probably not salvageable, and with the CRA and what's happened with that, and I'm looking at dates, they're talking about April 2013, subject to meet and confer, a lot of mumbo jumbo. The bottom line is, the community's unhappy, the business community's unhappy. It's a very unsavory condition on Sherman Way, just west of Lindley. So what are you folks going to do about cleaning up this mess?
Good morning. Shafia Mir from the CIO's office. I believe the property that you've identified is listed as a housing asset property on attachment to the CIO report, and currently, we would defer specific questions about specific properties, especially the housing assets, to the Housing Department. We do have staff here.
Well, I don't care who we defer it to. My concern is, and the community's concern, the business's concern, is it's been neglected. It's been neglected, it's been vandalized, and it's a real negative look in the community, and people don't like it, people don't want. I've gone by there personally, and it's a terrible situation, and we keep giving excuses, and nothing's getting done. And I'd like to just get a bulldozer and bulldoze those places down because they're not habitable anymore for residents or for business. Now, there's an abandoned restaurant, there's abandoned office buildings. It is a really unsightly situation, and something's got to be done. We're not going to wait till April 2013 to get something done. So we can't keep passing the bullet. We need to get something done. So whoever wants to respond, how we're going to handle it and not wait till April 2013 to get it done, whoever wants to take that challenge, take the floor. You got it, sir.
Ed Gibson with the Housing Department. Specifically, there are some of those that may be commercial, and I can't address those, but specifically, like the Reseda Theater that is listed.
Well, that's further down the road.
Okay.
Well, Reseda Theater, we had ready to go. I think a day before we signed the documents, everything blew up.
Yes. If they are residential properties on the housing asset list, they'll move much quicker than that April date is the plan. Currently, staff is actually going to take a look at all the lists on that housing asset list that was provided by the CRA, one that we can't quite confirm, but we're going to go start doing site visits actually next week so we can see what's going on with each of these individual parcels. We don't have full access to the files from CRA yet. We are working on the transition plan, particularly the transfer agreement from CRA, so that we can get that transferred over. We're in the final details of that. Once that plan is in place, then it will outline the timeline for which these assets would come over. So from that, we'll need, we will go through a process from waiting on the Department of Finance to finish its review, which started beginning of August, and we've been answering questions for them through this month. Once that, we're going to go to the governing board at CRA, to city council, of course, and back to the Oversight Board.
So let's cut to the chase.
And we'll move much faster. It'll be this year for housing assets.
Okay, and what about the other assets? Now, you're talking about Reseda Theater, which is Sherman Way and Reseda. I'm talking about the areas further east down there, Lindley and Sherman Way on the South Side Street, abandoned restaurant, abandoned office building. A couple of those parcels were torn down by someone. I don't know who did it, but they did a great job demolishing. We still have some other venues there that have to have handled. But we had a meeting yesterday in my district with the business community, the residents, revitalized Reseda. One of our Pioneer Women was there. It's a real nuisance, and we don't want to wait a long time.
I hear you. If I have to cross-check the addresses, are they on the housing asset list? If they are on the housing asset list, we're moving forward.
I understand they're not on the housing asset list. I have 1-8210 and 1-8128 Sherman Way.
Lisa Johnson Smith, City Administrative Officer.
Can you speak up?
Lisa Johnson Smith, City Administrative Officer. So what we have before you is a set of properties that were transferred to the city back in June 2011. What we have done is we have made a recommendation to return these properties back to CRA on attachment one. It was amended in Housing Committee, and four of these properties were removed for further consideration. But the remaining ones would be returned back to CRA. It would become CRA's responsibility to clean up those properties because, under the legislation, the operation and maintenance of those properties would be considered an enforceable obligation.
Let me stop you right now. Let me stop you right now. June 2011. This is now August 2012. It's been over a year, and nothing's been done. And now we're waiting longer. People are tired of waiting for this nuisance to be abated, and that's the problem. Now, we don't care if you tear it down, demolish it, but we're taking that ball and bouncing back and forth. Something needs to be done to address the situation, and not just, you know, a year's gone by and nothing's been done, except more graffiti, more vandalism, more problems, more calls for the police. We can't wait another six, seven, eight months, a year, while the bureaucracy and red tape continually plague that community that wants to see something done. And I agree with them, because the business community's saying, you know what? People don't want to come anywhere because it doesn't look good, because of the unsavory environment that's created. Graffiti, vandalism, I mean, it's terrible what they've done with it. So we don't want to wait. Again, it's been over a year, and nothing's been done. So we need to cut through this red tape, we need to get something done, and we need to do it in expeditious fashion, because the CRA was doing something. It fell apart, and now we're bouncing that ball back and forth. Meanwhile, if you live in that community, you'd say, is anyone care? Is anyone going to do anything? So what I'm pushing for is to get something done. How do we come up with some demolition, get a permit or whatever, and I can get some, I'll find the money to get it demolished? How do we get down? Just tear it down. We're happy with that. How do we accomplish that?
Well, I think if it's the city's responsibility, then we would have to determine which properties are currently under the city's responsibility, and then identify a source of funding and move forward to have that happen. And if it's returned to CRA, we would have to send the building and safety out to our code enforcement to look at these violations, and then they would have to address the properties that CRA would have ownership of.
Because they've already been cited a number of times. In fact, the city, I think last week, put up some fences because so much negative activity has taken place, and they spent, I think, $4,000 fencing it. So now you've got the lappaded places that are fenced off. It's only going to be a matter of time until someone jumps the fence and does more vandalism and creates more problems. Again, you've got legitimate businesses that are already complaining.
Mr. Zine, I have somebody else on the queue.
Okay, I'm just trying to find a solution that's expeditious.
And I want to help you find that solution, and maybe Mr. Cardenas can assist you in that fashion.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are many communities and people who share your frustration, Councilmember Zine. One of the problems that we have sometimes with state legislation, they're heavy on action but light on details. And unfortunately, the state of California, with its approximately 40 million people and hundreds of different cities and many counties, the problem is that when something happens at the local level, they're nowhere around, but we're here, and we get the calls, and we try to do something. But if the staff could help clarify the answer to this question, clarify the answer to this question, it's kind of, are there ambiguities? Clarify whether or not there are or are not ambiguities that are causing issues here at the local level when it comes to the disposition and/or the care, and/or whether or not if somebody does, in fact, proactively do the right thing on a moment's notice to one of these properties, will they, in fact, be reimbursed or not? Is there some ambiguity in that realm, or is it pretty cut and dry?
Well, I think at this point, all of these properties, whatever arrangement that had been in place prior to June 2011 for maintenance operations remained, and I know CRA has been maintaining more than 50% of these properties from their funds. The reason why we're here today is to, because we have a state order to return the properties. However, CRA has said if we're going to retain certain properties, then the city would have to start resuming responsibilities. And I think that's why we're here today, to move their responsibility to the right party.
But even with that, is it abundantly clear that if there's expenditures on that property, on any of these properties and whatever disposition they're in, is it clear that the local jurisdiction will be made whole with their expenditures?
The legislation is silent on that?
That's my point. And another way, in plain English, to say when legislation is silent, that means that is the city the arbiter on getting reimbursed on expenses or the local CRA, or is it the state or somebody in between that would eventually be the arbiter and satisfy that reimbursement when a request is made?
It's unclear. It's unclear at this point.
Yeah, but we can't even reimburse ourselves, even though we feel that the reimbursement is completely legit, because the state could say, we're not okay with that expenditure, or we're not okay with that reimbursement. We have yet to know whether or not they're going to agree with legitimate expenditures on the panoply of these properties, even though they might be in different legal dispositions right now.
Correct.
Okay? That's correct, is it not?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to say, just the general process for any type of request for reimbursement from the CRA, the currently that exists, is to submit it to the DLA Board, the governing board, and then it goes up through this whole process, which you alluded to. It goes to the Oversight Board, which can overturn it or accept it, and then it goes on to the state, which can overturn it or accept it.
Correct. And I can understand, Mr. Zine, if a local government like the city of Los Angeles went out there and spent $2,700 to fence off a building. But the problem is this: We have some buildings that could be causing a monthly expenditure for maintenance that could be in the thousands a month, and then before you know it, just one building might have $56,000 in what appears to be legitimate reimbursables to protect not only that asset, but to also protect the blight in the community. And then all of a sudden, it goes through the process through a request, and somewhere along the way, they say, no, we're not going to reimburse you. Well, I don't know if people have noticed or not, but the state of California has been limiting the funds that they normally used to give us for many years, and also the funds in the city of Los Angeles. We don't have as many discretionary funds as we used to. The general fund has been impacted, so where's that money going to come from? And that's the biggest problem. Even if we bit the bullet and went ahead and said, let's just maintain this property, in many of these properties, we are very unsure as to whether or not we're going to be able to recoup those investments or that protection to the community. And that's at the root of one of the problems here, is that the state of California was sloppy in their legislation, and because of the silence in the legislation and/or the ambiguities in the legislation, it is causing havoc, community after community, throughout Los Angeles and throughout the state.
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. I'd like to ask the folks at the table, is it possible to put together some type of, for lack of a better word, a flow chart to tell us where we're at with these properties? Is that a Herculean effort? Is that too much to ask? But, in other words, we should be able to respond to our constituents where certain properties are at, what stage they're in, what are the consequences of certain actions? Is that possible?
We can look into that. What we can tell you, and what the CIO's report indicates, as far as the status of all of these properties, including the ones that are on the retain list, which is attachment two, they are subject to a reverse clawback by the state comptroller in that they've been, the cities have been asked to return all assets which CRA has transferred to them in 2011, and it, there's, so this is part of the legislation which dissolved the CRAs. As far as if the council member is asking specifically about the specific status on the local level of each property, that research needs to be done in conjunction with CRA because these were originally with CRA, and those records haven't been transferred over.
But if I listen to my colleagues in terms of issues that are impacting the communities, yet we have these conditions that lead us to this place where the law is silent, then the question is, then what? So what are our options?
Well, what would happen is, we could go and have, the city could go and have someone take a look at these properties and determine the condition they are in, and then, of course, the ownership of the property, whoever owns it, whether it's CRA or the city, would ultimately have to make a decision on the funds, where it would come from to bring these properties up to code. If the city did spend money to bring these properties up to code, the only recourse the city would have would be to file a claim against CRA and say that they need to reimburse us. If the city maintains ownership of the properties, we're not sure what the response CRA or Department of Finance would have with that claim, but we can move that claim forward.
See, and you took us to a fork in the road that gave us four different pathways we could take. How does Joe Citizen know that? How, you know, how do we know that with our staff, we're out in the field, getting beat up because of the complexities caused by this neglect? We should talk afterwards, but I think that's something we should work on, it would help us all out to be able to follow through on the notion of accountability. Who's accountable? And I think that's what Councilmember Zine and Councilmember Cardenas is painting out very clearly. clearly, that there's ambiguity, silence. So what are our options? I think that's what we're looking for. Councilmember Zein, you're on the queue.
Ambiguity, silence, unclear. The problem is, people in that community are disgusted with the red tape and the bureaucracy. That's the problem. People are living in this environment, the business community, and I have a nice letter from them saying, councilman, nothing's been done. What are you doing for us? And I turn to you folks and we get ambiguity, silence, there's no answers. These places cannot be brought up to code. They've got to be demolished. It's real simple. We get a demolition permit, we demolish them, we clean that property, then we get someone to come in and do something with it. Now, the Reseda Theater, again, we are ready to sign. CRA went away, that is one issue. Then the other issue is down at Lindley and Sherman Way. So what I want is, I will give you folks the addresses that we're concerned with, the locations we're concerned with, and it's all on Sherman Way between Lindley and Reseda, the specific addresses, and come back and let us know what we can do. Not ambiguity, not possibilities, not brought up to code, but how we demolish the properties and everybody will be happy. And with that, we want to bring this conclusion. But we're not going to wait till June 2013 or 2014 or 2015 because we know how the system lingers. And these people are sick and tired of it. I am sick and tired of it. We owe them better. We owe them better. And the CRA, which dissolved, didn't do anything except like you leave your child on a doorstep and walk away. Well, someone's going to have to take that child and take care of it. We need to take care of it. So I'm going to give you folks the addresses. We will then come back. Mr. Chair, we send this to a committee or how do you want to do that?
Well, are you asking for a report back?
Report back to this committee or to the council?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a report back. I will get you the addresses, report to the council with some definite answers, and then hopefully we can get this matter resolved for the community, the people that live out there that have to tolerate this.
Thank you.
So I know we're all in the bureaucratic maze. People in the community paying taxes don't understand that and don't want to deal with it. And I support what they're saying. Sir, do you have anything to say other than looking sharp there?
I understand your concern.
My frustration more than concern.
And your frustration, but Councilman Cardenas is correct. The problem is the legislation.
Can you move the microphone a little closer?
Councilman Cardenas is correct. The legislation out of Sacramento throws these particular projects, if they were former redevelopment agency assets, into a state of limbo. The ownership of those assets now is even in question if they were transferred by the agency to the city. And the problem is, if, and I agree with you, I think in most cases, they either would have been demolished, I would presume, in the normal course in a redevelopment agency activity for the purposes of redevelopment. Unfortunately, the state legislations threw all that into this bag. And now the question, as it now stands, is even if the city wished to demolish those facilities, does it actually own the property and have the right to do it under the state law? Because the question then is, are we somehow diminishing the value somehow of the asset that belongs to the successor agency? I think it's appropriate that we come back with a report to try to describe this to you and to describe the process as it might be expedited to go through the successor agency if these properties are transferred back to them or if not, and see if we can't get some action taken with the CRA's involvement to, for gosh sakes, relieve the communities of the public safety problems and the businesses of the drag that these, that these, that these properties create.
Okay, thank you. So who would we deal with on the addresses?
You can give it to the CIO's office.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank Councilmember Zein, Councilman Cardenas close?
Thank you very much. Many of, many of the public have not seen what has taken place over this in the committee hearings, et cetera. I just want to make sure that as the chairman of the Housing Committee and Economic Development, where a lot of this has been discussed and developed and reported to the council members, this team of folks have been doing a really, really good job. One of the biggest problems that we have and one of the reasons why we have outside counsel is because it's mired in a lot of legal nuances. And that's one of the biggest problems that we have right now. And what we need to be mindful of always, as a city within the state of California, the state legislature are the ones who make the rules that we've now been subjected by. And even though it's very tumultuous, even though if some of us would have wrote that legislation ourselves, we would have probably done it a lot tighter with a lot more of an accurate view of how local communities and local government need to see that legislation. That's not what happened. What happened was, we've been suggested by a very sweeping legislation, which is light on details. And this discussion today and the frustration that Councilmember Zein and many of us feel is the, is, is, has come about because the state legislature rushed through this legislation. They left out a lot of important details. They don't get local government responsibility. And unfortunately, they don't understand what it's like when you have a blighted facility and people can honestly say, I would love to do something about it, but my hands are tied. And unfortunately, right now, the disposition of these properties with this motion is hopefully going to bring some more clarity, but unfortunately, not complete clarity because the legislation in and of itself is not clear. So I just want to say once again that this team of folks has done a really, really good job with the mess that the state legislature has given us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank Councilman Cardenas for your diplomacy. So, seeing anyone else on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you very much and thank you for your hard work. Item 17 will move forthwith. It's item 17. What's next, Mr. City Clerk?
Mr. President, I believe that brings us back to general public comment.
Okay, we have a few cards on general public comment. We have Joe Conlon, Jennifer Garcia, Terrence Clayton, and Walter E. Pagnanto. Please come on up. Give us your name, please.
Jennifer Garcia.
Okay, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Garcia. I am an employee of Aviation Safeguards and I have worked for them for the past three years. All the members of the city council should have received this letter from the SEIU dated August 22nd. SEIU says that the employees of Aviation Safeguards are waiting for their health care. Are we waiting for health care?
No.
Our employers, our employer has provided us our choice of health care for the first day of employees fired, fired SEIU. We have health care. SEIU says our employees acting in defiance of the National Mediation Board. What SEIU doesn't tell you is that you have no standing with the National Mediation Board of the National Labor Relations Board. SEIU is not certified union at LAX and therefore must deal with the workers directly. SEIU, while the city, says, while the city is waiting to decide if your employer is in compliance with the living wage ordinance, we are going without health care. Are we going without health care?
No.
The working families of Aviation Safeguards need your help. Don't be fooled by SEIU campaigns. SEIU doesn't care about the workers at LAX. They only care about themselves. Many of us live in your district and would like to meet with you. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker? Please give us your name.
My name is Walter Panamino. Good morning, councilmembers. I have worked with Aviation Safeguards, excuse me. My name is Walter Panamino. I have worked with Aviation Safeguards for five years. SEIU is continuously handing out flyers like this one at LAX. SEIU annoys passengers and tourists and makes false statements that Los Angeles doesn't treat our workers right. Hard to be a first-class airport when passengers are being harassed getting to and from their flights. This flyer says SEIU wants better wages for workers at LAX. Guess what? I make more money now since the workers fired SEIU. 93% of the Aviation Safeguard workers saw an average increase in our wages of $2 an hour after we fired SEIU. SEIU was stealing our wages for two years until we signed a petition to fire them. SEIU is stealing the wages of thousands of workers at LAX as we speak. Our entry level, an entry-level job at LAX with an employer starts at $28,000 with health care. An entry-level job at LAX with SEIU pays $18,000 with health care. Tell me who is good for workers at LAX?
Okay, now, well.
Not SEIU. If you support SEIU, if you allow SEIU to continue this campaign of threatening workers, employees, unless we join their union, then you are not with us. You are not for the workers at LAX. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Give us your name.
Terrence Clayton. Good morning. Good morning, my name is Terrence Clayton and I have worked for Aviation Safeguards for four years. When I said no to SEIU and signed a petition to fire them, became a target of SEIU's campaign. All the, all the employees of Aviation Safeguards become a target of SEIU's campaign. Anyone trying to stop them from stealing our money or the wages of thousands of LAX workers become a target of SEIU. They harass us at work and in front of passengers while we, while we're doing our job. They harass us as we commute to and from work. SEIU follows us on the buses and trains and as, as we walk from the parking lots. They even follow us from our homes. As elected officials, I think you especially understand how imitating that can be when someone knows where you live and is willing to knock on your door. I'm not against unions, but SEIU, local 1877s are bullying. We don't allow bullies at our schools and you don't allow bullying here at your meetings. We should not be bullied simply because we won't allow them to represent us. If you support SEIU in this campaign of bullying at LAX, then you are not for the workers at LAX. If you support SEIU, then you are condoning this treatment of the workers at LAX. We love our jobs, we make money without SEIU. We have great health care and we have an employee that is fine for us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. One last speaker?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Joe Conlon and I am an employee of Aviation Safeguards. Over two and a half years ago, you made changes to the living wage ordinance with the intent to improve the standard of living for the workers and the families at LAX. Many of you championed this change and we applaud your efforts and intent. Unfortunately, there is language in the ordinance that allows collective bargaining agreements to supersede the ordinance. The SEIU requires language in their agreements that allows employees to be hired well below the minimum financial requirement set forth in the ordinance. Currently, an estimated 20% of the covered employees, of their covered employees, are making wages below acceptable levels. Additionally, they require companies to pay health care costs beyond the true value and whether or not employee needs health care. Our employees immediately voiced their concern with these issues and tried to work with the SEIU to find answers and ensure that the money they were owed went into their pockets. They would not listen and they still would not explain where the millions of dollars have gone. Our employees throw out the SEIU because of this indifference to their concerns. There are still thousands of employees at LAX that are being subjected to the below standard hourly wages and loss of health care funds. The SEIU is still diverting millions of dollars on an annual basis from the employees and families at LAX. With the current language in the LWO, they operate with no accountability. The substandard wages and diversion of health care funds are immune to your audits. What does this say to the hardworking employees and their families at LAX? On this Labor Day weekend, the employees of Aviation Safeguard ask for your support and for the support of the fellow coworkers at LAX. They have been, they've had the courage to stand up to the SEIU for their bad business practices. They continue to be bullied and threatened by the SEIU, earning fear that they will lose their jobs by uninformed politicians. There needs to be a complete review and audit of the LWO. Our employees encourage this review and hope that when you open the books of the SEIU, you will ask them where the millions of dollars that you allocated for the employees of LAX have been going. The employees and their families need you to hold them accountable.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Mr. City Clerk?
Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Okay. Members, in announcements? I do have one announcement, though. Let me start off with this one. I want to congratulate Councilman Dennis P. Zein, the Daily News Reader's Best. He's been considered and acknowledged as the best elected official two years in a row from the Daily News. So congratulations. There's some great pictures of you here with all the different functions, activities and accomplishments, swimming pools, schools, light rail. Great job, Dennis. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best elected official of the third district.
No, it says the Valley. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council does have motions for posting and referral.
Okay, so, posting and referred. Now we have, any other announcements? Please.
Not Weisart, pardon me.
Microphone?
Thank you very much. I just want to announce that we have an annual pet resource fair tomorrow, Saturday, September 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at East Valley Animal Care Center at 14401 Van Owen Street in Van Nuys. It's actually right off the corner of Van Nuys Boulevard and the marquee spot right there that everybody in the Valley recognizes. There's a big Wells Fargo Bank right there on the corner and it's two doors down right on Van Nuys. And the most important thing is that we're going to be doing pet adoptions and also we're going to be doing free microchips for the first 100 people. Again, free microchips for your pets for the first 100 people who come and sign up. Low-cost vaccines, $7 rabies shots, $17 DHPP or FVRCP, and also $14 Bordatella shots as well, and $19 and $22 shots of other kinds as well. We also have, the adoptions are discounted if you come tomorrow. And then for animals five years and older, it's 50% off. So we have senior animals as well. We'd like to get adopted out. So with that, understand that we're going to be giving prizes to kids and family members who show up. Again, it's a lot of things going on that are free, but most importantly, educating the community about how important it is to adopt an animal. We do not want to euthanize them. That still goes on in our city. Hopefully someday we'll get to the point where we don't. But it's going to take every single community member to do their part. Fall in love with one of these pets, adopt it, get it spayed and neutered, and off you go. And the pet's going to have a nice, long, wonderful life and probably going to make you happier for it. Again, tomorrow, Saturday, September 1st, 10 to 2, on Van Nuys Street at the East Valley Animal Care Center, right off of Van Nuys Boulevard. Thank you very much.
You did say senior animals, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All animals, but seniors are half off.
Okay. Councilman Weisart?
Thank you, Mr. President. And on September 4th, I'd like to wish the city of Los Angeles happy birthday. We are celebrating the birthday of the city, the birthday of this great city tomorrow at Placita Alvera. But it all begins with a ceremonial walk from San Gabriel Mission at 6:00 a.m. And some of us will be joining them at Union Station at El Pueblo at 9:30 a.m. There will be live entertainment, which I expect will include Councilmember Tom Labonge. And we also have Million Trees LA there to give out free trees. And my office is providing the birthday cake. And a little history, Mr. Labonge, I'm going to leave it up to you to give the little history. What year did the Pobladores found the city of LA?
1781, so we're 231 years old.
And how many came?
44, 11 families. And Mr. Garcetti is one of those families, he'll tell you.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Labonge?
I think it's a great, if everybody wants to come, there's nothing like a great walk tomorrow morning. Get up early, go out to Mission San Gabriel. San Gabriel's the oldest city in the county. That's where it all started from, where there was 21 missions in the state. But this is where the city was founded. The actual river at that time was near like where Track 12 is at Union Station, right in there. But our city has greatness. It'll be fun later in the day, come down and you could take the Orange Line, the Red Line, the Blue Line, the Expo Line, and Green Line connected to get here and enjoy as well. Thank you, Mr. Weisart, for your great leadership and your staff, and we'll have a cake, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman Labange.
And so, San Gabriel Mission, 6:00 a.m. if you want to do the walk. 9:30 at Union Station if you want to join them, to come over to El Pueblo, and the festivities going on until 1:00 p.m.
Fantastic, be a part of history. Congressman Joe Woskina.
Tom, what was it like back then in those missionary days? I just wanted to know.
Mr. Zine put his pants on.
Is that right? I love you, Tom. Happy Labor Day to all across the city. This Monday, we're going to have a huge event at the Vincent Thomas Bridge. Conquer the bridge race, yours truly, along with some of my staff members, Branamir, Kevin, and Nicole. We're going to be running with LAPD cadets. The race kicks off at 8:05. Also, the Wilmington Labor Day Parade, it's a hit every year. This Monday, the Labor Day Parade, I believe, kicks off at 10, but check our website, la15th.com for more information on the parade. Thank you.
Thank--
Who was Vincent Thomas?
Former Assembly Member.
What very big law did he pass, Ed? AB 283 for the zoning, help get local zoning.
Exactly.
And hey, last one, Joe. In the movie Heat, what'd they call the bridge?
Saint Vincent Thomas.
The Saint Vincent Thomas Bridge. Robbie De Niro's called it Saint Vincent.
All right, this is stretching out quite a bit. Congressman Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, as you all know, last week, last Wednesday, August 22nd, there was a horrible, tragic accident that occurred in the Valley Village neighborhood in my district, in which two young women were tragically killed, coming to the aid of a driver who had had an accident. And I'll be asking that we adjourn in their memory next week, when we can gather the families and so on here. But I did want to report to all of you that many of you have been very gracious in offering to try to find ways to help. Many people in the community have wanted to reach out and help these families, and so, working with the Neighborhood Council Valley Village, as well as the Valley Interfaith Council, we've set up a fund to help support the families in their time of need, and if anyone is interested in helping, they can go to vic-la, that's Valley Interfaith Council, vic-la.org, and under the Donate tab, there's a way that you can provide help. You can also do it by phone, by calling 818-880-4842. So I appreciate the outreach that so many of you have made and so many people in our community. This was a moment of tragedy, but it was also a moment of heroism, and I know that as the city grieves with these families, we also are inspired by their spirit of heroism. And so, if you'd like to help them in that time of need, this is a great way to do it. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Congressman Krikorian. They are two angels. Any other announcements? Okay, adjournments? We'll start on this side. Congressman Woskina?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, today I'd like to adjourn in memory of Edna Jones, mother of Reverend James Jones, as we know him as JJ, very active in the Watch Gang Task Force. Edna peacefully passed away on August 29th. Edna Jones, affectionately known as Mama, Granny, Mary Lou, and Grandma, was a beacon in the community. She arrived in Los Angeles in 1960 and lived here, and a shining example of goodness for others. Grounded in her faith, Edna enjoyed the New Life Baptist Church in Los Angeles upon her arrival, eventually becoming a mother of the church. Edna was employed by Mattel Inc. from 1961 to '71, and in 1973, she began working for the Board of Education at LaSalle Elementary School. Always a hard worker, Edna continued her work there until June of this year. Everyone who met Edna was never a stranger for long, through her work and enhancement Elije, making the world a beautiful place. She refers to everyone, she referred to everyone she met as her grandbaby. Edna will be deeply missed by everyone that knew and loved her, especially her seven children that she raised with only God to help and guide her. Funeral services are pending. May she rest in peace. And again, to JJ, we're thinking about you. We love you and continue to stay strong, and may Edna Jones rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Woskina. Any other adjournments on this side?
I wonder if I could ask Mr. Labange and Mr. Krikorian to join me at the podium, because I know all three of us will want to say something about Ellen Vukovich, who was a great leader in Sherman Oaks.
Please.
So Ellen Vukovich, the voice of Sherman Oaks, passed away too soon on Monday, following a battle with cancer. She was a longtime board member of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, otherwise known as SOHA, and she wrote the "From the Desk of SOHA" column in the Studio City Sherman Oaks and Sino News, and for the Sherman Oaks Patch. And Ellen devoted countless hours over many, many years as a tireless advocate for improving the quality of life in Sherman Oaks and Los Angeles as a whole. And she believed in sensible development, and if her proposed development was too large, she was proud to be outspoken in her opposition. And on occasion, developers disagreed with her, and yes, even council members, but we never found her disagreeable. In fact, she was very much beloved by all. And all of us have lost a valuable resident of the city of Los Angeles, and for those of us who knew her well, we also have lost a good friend. Our condolences go out to Ellen's husband, Peter, her parents, her sister, and to her beloved dogs, two greyhounds, and one with it. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. And I would just like to add, every community in Los Angeles has a handful of people that anyone can immediately identify as being the voice of that community, the leader of that community that people turn to. And Ellen was one of those people in Sherman Oaks. On any issue that affected quality of life, any issue that affected development, any issue that affected the conditions that homeowners in Sherman Oaks dealt with, Ellen was always front and center. And I think Mr. Kretz was so right in saying that even when she was being the most forceful advocate that you would ever want to come across for a cause, she was always doing it with a smile, doing it with affection for her community, and in a positive spirit. And it really is a great loss that we will no longer have Ellen's voice in Sherman Oaks, but I think anybody who ever visits that community will see the legacy that she leaves behind from her body of work, and it is a great loss, and I want to express my condolences to her entire family, to the entire community of Sherman Oaks.
And along with Mr. Kretz and Mr. Krikorian, and how the districts move, this is a person who should be remembered and is a loss. And at some appropriate time in the future, we'll all join together with the Sherman Oaks community to plant a tree for her in the appropriate location, because the roots of what she had done and did for that community will long last, and her memory will be served well. Thank you, Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, councilmembers. Any other adjournment motions on this side? Congressman Parks?
I'd like to request that we adjourn in memory of Johnny Shannon Nelson, born in Texas in 1925, passed away August 25th, 2012. She was the 12th of 13 children. She grew up in a happy home, celebrated a strong belief in family and in the church. She continued her life as an active member of the Church of God of Prophecy. Forty-five, she married her high-sku sweetheart and moved to Los Angeles and raised a family of four children. She was a trained cosmetologist. She worked in the field in Los Angeles area as a small businesswoman for over 25 years. She was very active in her church missionary work and realized one of the longtime dreams, visiting the Holy Land in Israel with her two sisters, Dora and Virginia. She loved to go fishing with her brothers and shared a favorite pastime with her grandchildren. She was an excellent cook and known for her delicious cakes. She worked, her home was always filled with family. She survived by her brother and her sister, her brother Troy, and her sister Dora, and her children, and a host of family members. Funeral services will take place Saturday, September 1st, at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills Memorial Park, located at 6300 Forest Lawn Drive in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Congressman Parks. Any other adjournment motions? Congressman Labange?
Thank you. Mr. President, David Siegel, Charles David Siegel, 66, too young, was loved and respected by all. He is, for over 25 years, longtime attorney with Munger, Tolson, Olson. Maybe adjourn in his memory, someone who was a contributor, died too young at 66. Maybe remember Charles David Siegel.
Thank you, Congressman Labange. Seeing no other adjournment motions, have a great weekend. This meeting is adjourned.